Hey, Dick.
Mr. Chairman, you're all set.
Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, December 29th, 2021, not one, 2021, meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. I'm going to read the executive order on remote participation because we're remote as well as live today. We have a hybrid meeting. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 20. That auto was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On Wednesday, June 16th, 2020, by action of legislature, this order was extended until April 1st, 2022. And call the meeting to order. I'm going to call a roll. Commissioner Stady.
Present.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is present. We have a quorum. I'm going to ask everyone to join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands indivisible with liberty of the people and justice for all. Thank you. This is our last meeting of 2021. We have a reasonable agenda today. President is County Director John Cronin, Assistant Director William Buckley, and Treasurer Vlade is with us as well as the staff. So we're going to go right to here. The third item on our agenda is minutes in the open session meeting of December 22nd, 2021 for approval.
I move approval of the meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the meeting of the open session of December 22nd, 2021. All in favor? It is a vote. Number four, public comment. Is there anyone contacted the county director relative to public comment?
No, Commissioner.
Is there anyone on this call today that wants public comment? Okay, number five. Appointments, we have none. Number six, all business. I see no all business. Do you have any?
I do not. May I make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman, however, may not fall out under all business, but as a rule with the two commissioners being virtual, may we ask permission for their use of stamps in approving any future documents that may be voted on?
Okay, Commissioners, can we have permission to use your stamps today?
Yeah, permission granted. Yes, sir.
This meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
But to answer your question, I have no all business.
Number seven, personnel matters for consideration. We have a carryover matter from last week at the registry of deeds. It's a notice of appointment of Lily Keenan of Quincy as a senior clerk, replacing Michelle McAlum, who I believe was promoted last week, effective 1/3/22.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, when appropriate.
Okay, we have Registered O'Donnell here.
I just, I actually just.
Have a point.
I don't know what the procedures are here with everything going on. Hello, Commissioners out there, and Commissioner Shea. I'm just here, I guess there were questions last week, so I just, I'm here, you know, to seek from the three Commissioners what's needed so that this can get into a position to be considered. So, you know.
Well, let me read what happened last week, and we'll all be on the same page, I believe. Last week, under personnel, we did one, two promotions in the Norfolk Registry. The third one was this appointment of Lily Keenan as a level position, replacing one of the people that promoted, which I previously stated. As Director Cronin stated, the motion tabled is consistent with policy. Marguerite Lee, First Assistant Register, stated she understands there was a policy change, but the registry is adhering to collective bargaining agreements in place. Chairman Shea stated he understands the paperwork, but this personnel matter is incomplete. Chairman Shea stated he is unsure how the collective bargaining agreement ties into this personnel matter. Commissioner Stady stated the Commissions will consider this matter next week. Motion was made and seconded and voted on.
Sure, and again.
And I believe this has to do with a criminal record check and a physical.
Pre-employment.
Okay, all right, because.
Every one of our employees since we adopted the new blue paper, which I believe was October 9th, and I have a copy of what we signed off on. There were many changes.
And that, you know, that's fine. I'm just trying to, there was some email about pre-employment appointments, so that's a physical.
Correct.
And again, I'm just here, I just want to know what the Commissioners need so this can get properly considered, because there's an operational need, obviously, to have a position filled, and also, you know, Lily Keenan is, you know, hopefully a candidate who will do well at the registry like other employees that we've had, and, you know, we want to move, you know, try to move it forward. As far as the physical, you know, and again, I'm just here, if those are the two things that are needed, and the Commissioners are saying that's what's needed, then that's what's needed. I will say on the physical, that came up in negotiations in 2016 to 2019, that contract, and I believe it came up a second time. And so the physical wasn't put in, wasn't put in the union contract. And again, everyone has different views, but I think it wasn't put in because the physical didn't tie into the job at the registry as far as being a clerk or doing clerical duties or doing recordings. And so I think, you know, I mean, reasonable people have, you know, reasonable interpretations. I come from, my dad was, you know, 38 years in a union. And again, if that's what's needed, we'll do it. It's just, it was brought up in collective bargaining, wasn't put in the contract, and, you know, if that's what's needed to get this considered, it will be done. But I think that was one of the, one of the issues from last week.
I'm not going to go too far afield, because I have been told by the Director and Michelle Labadini that we, there's nowhere in the contract can we find it. The the makeup of the blue paper is discussed on these items that are ever in every past bargaining. If it comes up in the future, we'll deal with it. But the second section of this says, "All forms must be submitted to the county HR Director no later than one week before any vote can be taken by the Commissioners." And you signed it. It's got one, two, three, four, five, six boxes. Three of them are checked and three of them are not. And that was the reason. There is no otherworldly reason. But as for physical, I think that physical is so important now in this COVID crazy world we're living in, that it's a double, I think it's a double good thing for new people to take. Just hired four, we just hired four acting custodians or whatever the term.
Temporary.
Temporary. They all took a physical and other tests and I'm looking forward to working with Lily Keenan.
No, sure. Yep, and that's, we'll get that. I mean, that's why I'm here. There's two Commissioners out there. You're here, Joe. You're communicating what's needed, and that's, that's fine, and, you know.
Didn't send out what was needed last week, too?
The Register's office was informed.
You know, I'm here to deal with the Commissioners.
Okay.
You know, because, you know, something with all pre-employment, I'm trying to straighten it out, Joe. But, you know, you raised the union issue. That was the thing about the physical, as far as, you know, should it be done? That's what's needed, that's what's needed. We'll, we'll get on it and then.
I'm here to make sure you're not doing it as an iMap. It's going to be.
Hello, Mac?
Someone's on the call here.
Okay, Commissioners, we're on the matter of.
If I could, Mr. Chairman. Well. I don't know what happened here. I lost the sound.
Yeah, I can hear you, though.
Okay, are we? Mr. Chairman, I wanted to speak if I could. He didn't.
Looks like they didn't freeze. Oh, you know what? They're muted.
Okay. It's weird. Okay, I can hear you, Peter.
I can hear each other. There we go. All right.
Okay, technical difficulties, all right. First of all, it's good to see Registered O'Donnell come to our meeting. I'm glad he's trying to get to Sol. I think last week we had said there were some items missing, and there might have been some disagreement internally in his own department about whether it was union or non-union. But I think he understands what needs to be done. I'd like to make a motion to make this appointment effective and condition on those things being done, rather than having this carried over each week, each week, each week. The person's needed. The Registrar is doing a great job. We need the people. So I'd move the appointment, but subject to the fulfillment of the things that are missing. I primarily heard the physical, but I'd like to make that motion. It would be effective January 3rd, '22. Congratulations to the employee. It would probably be a great job, but make a condition on the fulfillment of that paperwork. I'll move that.
Okay, so it's not just taking a physical, it's passing the physical, right?
So I think the completion of, the paperwork shows you satisfactory a physical that's turned in. If it's not turned in, the appointment can't go forward. But at least it'd be one more thing off our desk.
Or if the, or if the physical fails, the vote would fail also, right? I mean, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, what, okay, what I thought was missing was a submission of a physical, showing a physical. I don't have the thing in front of me. I'm doing remotely like you, Peter. All I know is that there's some paperwork missing. So I'm trying to make little action here and compromise. I'd like to move the appointment today, but make it subject to the necessary requirements that were spelled out in that blue paper. If it's a physical, or if it says successful physical, whatever that would be, that would be my motion.
So long as it says successful physical, I'm okay with it. Otherwise, I'd want to see it.
Does it say successful physical, or is it a physical?
It's, I'm going to read them. Pre-employment physical receipt attached, core reform and copy of legal ID attached.
Okay.
And a pre-employment agreement. I don't think that's an issue. It's not, but those are the three. The other three we received. One was a job description, two was a resume, and three was an employment application filled out by Ms. Keenan of Quincy. So it is a successful physical and a core check. Recently, when we hired some custodians, we interviewed more than the four that we hired, and we gave physicals, I believe, to six people and other, and one flunked the physical. Doesn't matter who it was, he has not been employed. We're still working with him, though, for future. So I don't want to say that the flunking of a physical, but I'm not, puts you entirely out, but it puts you out for that date. But that's all that's missing. I don't want to.
Yeah.
If I'm understanding everything here, I'm going to support, go ahead.
I'll second Dick's motion with the assurance that the employee has to pass the physical, that's all.
Yeah.
I'm going to have a little discussion here with the Director, and if Bill wants to say anything, now I'm going to take the vote.
We may go ahead. Michelle, to come in. She just texted me and said January 3rd is too soon. We will not have enough time to onboard the hire, given, given what's in front of us. So I would recommend the following week is a start date contingent upon the language, Commissioner Stady.
Thank you. Did you hear that comments, Commissioner? Michelle thinks the third is too ambitious, but it could be done before the 10th.
Understood.
I don't want to leave you alone having this because.
That makes sense. Tight window. Well, do you want, can we accomplish the same thing then at our meeting next week? Or do we, do we want to go forward on my motion to compromise and move it forward? Makes sense to move, I would say move the motion. That way, Registered O'Donnell knows what has to be done, that he'll get the, I see him nodding his head. But let's move that. I'll submit my motion again for action that the appointment be made effective January 10, not the 3rd, and it be conditioned on the fulfillment of a successful physical. Is that satisfactory?
One more comment, Director Cronin.
I believe this applicant, if I'm not mistaken, also, we required a.
Corey?
Corey.
Okay.
Is that Richter?
Yes, that's why, yes, so if a Corey's needed, yeah, then that has to. And the Corey's being done to all employees, so.
All employees.
All employees are doing Corey's.
Without commenting on that, because Corey is very sensitive.
No.
There are people who have minor issues with Corey, and they do not get prevented from being hired. Minor things.
Right. I'll, Mr. Chairman, I'll agree to that being part of my motion, if you'll permit it.
Sure.
Okay.
One more time, Commissioner Collins.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to continue this matter one more time.
No, I, no.
Until this.
No, my motion wasn't continued. My motion.
Sorry to pass it, based on the applicant passing all of the requirements on the new and improved per form, which is approved by this board on October 9th, 2021.
Yes, sir. That's why I want to get active today. But it won't be until, until effective January 10, so what the Director said, that the HR Director said, so it should be sufficient time. Unless Registered O'Donnell feels he can't do that.
I'm here to try to move this along, so. All right. We will work on that and.
Can we understand what we're doing? I do. Do you, Commissioners? Do you make a motion? Okay. I'm going to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
This concludes this matter, hopefully.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Healthy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Number eight. Payroll expense warrants for approval. I'm looking for the warrant list. I'll probably read it myself unless you have it in your packet. Commissioners?
Yeah, I don't have that amended number, Chairman.
The amended number is, it was 50415408. It's now 50318397, broken down in the following manner. Warrant 22-26 payroll county, 135716.27.
Joe, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote on the 135. Number 2226, school payroll.
Okay, I'll move the payroll because she shouldn't do it. 22-26 payroll school, $345,370.29, so move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Now the amended number.
Okay, I got it. 12522. So for the county, you can correct me if I'm wrong. It should be $503,183.97, so move.
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It is a vote.
On that amendment or adjustment, if I may speak, is there any clarification sent from our office and the Treasurers to explain perhaps the item that need to be taken a look, taken a look at? Are we going to be dealing with that?
Director Cronin.
Commissioner Stady, yes, I would hope so. I had left a voicemail with the department head this morning, the Register, I should say, and hope to have a clarifying communication with him this week to determine how the allowable expense can move forward in one direction or another.
Okay, good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Number nine, request from the Town of Walpole for Engineering Department Services. Commissioners, I'm referring you to a memo in your packet dated December 23, 2021, from Patrick Higgins. Our county surveyor, relative to a department request from the Town of Walpole to do land surveying support services under Mass Chapter 28, Section 111 in the Mass General Laws. Patrick's comments are here, and he solicits any questions. He's on the call. If you have any questions, we have a history, of course, of working with the towns. I have the request from the town, all signed by Jim Johnson, the town administrator. Um. This is slope from roadway that approximately 50 feet on Lot 1B, which happens to be on North Street in the great Town of Walpole. And I believe, Patrick, we can do this? We're prepared to do this? I'm sorry, he's not on.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Phil Buckley, sorry, I don't think Patrick was able to hop on the call, but I can speak to it if the Commission has any questions. This is for point of reference. If you look, I shared my screen. Fisher Street to the bottom, that's the street that ends up next to the Aggie at the junction of Main Street and Fisher. So it's on the way towards Hilltop Farm. It's the parcel on the left as North Street turns into North Street, and Fisher ends. The town was able to purchase that from the Napa River Land Holding Association, which is a subsidiary of the Napa River Watershed Association. On the right-hand side is Willapond, which is a large pond, and the town's looking at maybe a canoe launch or something of that nature, and they're just looking to get the boundaries set, which, which Patrick believes he can do. It is, I will note, in the queue behind Canton. But it will be the next step. I see the gentleman from Canton shaking his head, and in approval, but it just, to give you a sense, this is about 1,000 yards south of the Adams Farm, which would be on the left, and then probably about 3,000 yards south of Hilltop, which would also be on the left-hand part of the street.
Mr. Chairman, through you, to our Associate Director. So Billy, is this, this is our land that's contiguous to the Aggie School, correct?
No, this is the town's. They just purchased it. It's, it's on the way to Hilltop and Adams Farm. So if you, Fisher Street on the bottom, it's probably a mile or a half a mile from the Aggie, but it's just, it's up the street. It's sort of on the road to Hilltop.
Okay, I know where it is. Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of hard. It's easy to miss. There's a, the Lot 1A, there is an old colonial house. You probably noticed it. It has a ton of firewood around it, and then there's a large parcel next to it that has about maybe an eight or 10-bay garage attached. But to the, directly across the street is a forestry parcel and a town well.
That's great. It's great. I think you took the words out of my mouth. I wanted to know where it was in the pecking order, but in a larger sense, to our Director and to Chairman Shea, engineering is getting quite busy, and we've added some people, as you know.
Right.
The department's getting very active. It might be a great suggestion, maybe once a month, if I could get, or we could get a little update from the Engineering Department, like where are they at, what they got to go for projects? Maybe, you know, maybe a little summary, because I know they got Canton, now they got Walpole. I thought they were doing something in Dedham. I thought, I saw that recently, so it'd be kind of nice to know. Be good for them and good for us, but I got no problem with the work. That's fine.
I think it's a great idea. Two things. Patrick's at every one of our meetings, usually Zoom. He's not here today because of a family obligation, but his last sentence here says, "The land surveying that is to be performed will be done in phases, and will require multiple businesses to site a survey as the survey work will be accomplished." So he's, he's, he's acquiescing that he believes we can capable of handling this and.
Sure. No problem.
I can't ask the timeframe, but if we, I'm going to sign your name to it today. I already signed it and let the town know.
I'm fine. We're good.
Any other questions on this matter of drawing some boundary lines on North Street and Walpole?
Do we need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I think so, yes.
I'm hoping that the request from the Town of Walpole for land surveying support services on Walpole Conservation Land, for topo survey and lateral boundary corners and points along the parcels, boundary lines located on North Street and Walpole, Mass, and as further described in materials attached by our Engineering Department, be approved for work effective this date.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a request for Engineering Department Services to the Town of Walpole, some surveying in the area of North Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll put it right into the queue here. Thank you. Number 10, ARPA warrants for approval. I don't believe we have any.
None this week.
Today?
No, sir.
We have a couple in the, in the pipeline.
I was going to give you an overall update.
Later in the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Excellent idea. Number 11, bid openings. We do not have any today. Number 12, we have no contract awards today. Number 13, ARPA report from the Director. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Chairman Shea. The, the county's ARPA program continues to move forward. We have 17 applications that have been filed to date. Five grants have been awarded. Two are in Level 1 review. Two grants not previously approved. Level 1 means it's with Clifton Larson Allen. When it gets to Level 2, it means it's with Powers and Sullivan. When it gets to Level 3, it comes for county review. So the two that are in Level 1 review still are probably at least a week or two away. And we have five additional grants, applications that are in draft form. So the portal shows a fair amount of activity. This week, like last, we fielded numerous calls from communities looking for clarification and guidance. All of them went very, very well, so folks are busy doing their thing with ARPA. I also want to add that yesterday, Norfolk County participated with three other counties in a multi-county conference call with our counterparts in Barnstable, Bristol, and Plymouth County to discuss two relatively emerging, important and emerging issues. One is a policy around revenue replacement applications and also the premium pay prong of ARPA. It's important, and we all believe and agree that as the interpretation or guidance towards communities' use of those areas is undertaken, that all four counties have the same rule. None of us want to drift or create any kind of room where we act independent of each other. It was a very productive call. We will schedule our next call for early February to follow up on the progress to date. The other meaningful output from that meeting was, again, to confirm Norfolk County is by far the most vibrant and active county with the distribution of ARPA funds. So that is all I have for that at this time.
Any questions about ARPA funds, Commissioners?
No, great job, John. Thank you. Keep the work going.
Number 14, report of COVID responses, also for Director Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. This board may recall that approximately a year ago, Norfolk County drafted COVID protocols. The protocols remain largely in effect. They have not been updated to reflect the changes in how the CDC and the Department of Public Health recommend management of COVID impacts. Working with our HR Director, Michelle Labadini, we hope to have a revised COVID policy to you next week so you can see the changes that the county ought to consider moving forward. Ironically, as Michelle and I were taking our first pass at these policies this past week, the very next day, the CDC released guidance on quarantine timeframes for individuals who are exposed to COVID. So it's obviously a very fluid process and a fluid environment, given how things have changed in the last year. We'll do our best to give you all an updated protocol to approve because it allows us to use that as guidance when and if we have any employees who have COVID or have come in contact with it. So our hope is by next week, you'll see something fresh on that.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, through you.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Through you, to the Director. I thought I saw something recently where they're now recommending the isolation period be reduced to five. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
I did see that. Okay. And how about those kits? Did you get any of those out to the towns, or any more coming in?
Nancy informed me yesterday the kits are due to arrive, I believe, January 5th, a week from today.
Beautiful. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Second pot here. Do we need to talk about vacation carryover policies?
Well, yes.
How does that end up under COVID?
I don't know.
Okay. I'm not going, I'm not, I'm going to say that we can discuss it, though, because it is on the agenda.
Very good.
Okay.
Commissioners, back on June 1st, 2021, you folks approved an employee carryover policy. This policy was broken into two sections. The first one is 15 days must be used within the first six months of FY '22. So effectively, July 1/21 to December 31st of '21. So I'm just announcing to you today, the first phase of that vacation carryover is coming to an end this week. The second phase is within 10 days, 10 days must be used within the following six months of FY '22. So we're engaging in the second phase of that policy you approved back in June. I just wanted to, first of all, mark this moment in time as progress towards a policy that you approved, but also confirm the interest in returning to the employee handbook effective July 1st, 2022, of following Rule 3, as it was stated in our handbook. We've had inquiry from the schools on, on this policy. Some folks, I think, have large balances, and they wonder if they'll have more time to, you know, take them, take their accrue time. We're sticking to the policy that you all drafted, and we'll alert folks that upon the expiration of this policy, we'll revert to Rule 3. And that was the purpose of bringing this in today.
Is it going to be on next week's agenda or no?
No, at this point, there's no point in it. I just wanted to alert the Commissioners, we're making progress. I've asked Michelle Labadini to develop a list of employees who are carrying large balances still halfway through this policy so that we can work with them to make sure that they achieve their goal of using 10 days before the end of the fiscal year.
Any more questions about vacation carryover?
Commissioner Stady does.
Commissioner Stady.
All right, Mr. Chairman, real quick. I noticed it's under COVID. Was there any discussion back then? I remember we had this policy. I remember quite well how we talked about it. But was there anything about COVID? And if someone couldn't use the time because of COVID, that they were granted maybe an extension? Maybe that's why it ended up there. I don't know. But is there anything in light of COVID? Is there anything about that? That would, you know. That would, you know.
Commissioner Stady, if I, if I could, I'm gonna venture a guess that, yes, there was some some impact of COVID on the policy that was drafted and in consideration of uh, the the timeframe that people, um, had to take their accrued time, there was some limitations. So I think you gave, I believe the Commissioners gave a very lenient, um, a period of time for folks to grapple with that uh, over the next 12 months from June 1st, to use the opportunity to, um, um, get rid of, if you will, or take that accrued time more meaningfully, but it was in consideration of the COVID pandemic during the state of emergency.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I would say that when we're, when we're in with the department heads during a budget sessions, which will be here sooner rather than later, that, you know, we gotta see what this, uh, how the carryover looks. Generally, it's department heads and it's people that, you know, had to be here. And, uh, it's not not entirely department heads, but it's a lot of them are, and there are a lot of key people here, so I think we got to review it as we go along because, uh, we gotta be prepared for when the, when the baby is born here or the bill is due. That's all. We don't want these to less surprised, the better off we are, so we can plan. This is a planning tool more than anything else.
I would say too, Mr. Chairman.
It's probably statewide. I.
No, but the the new implementation of our new system the technology we're gonna be using, that will make everybody a good handle on what they've got too.
That's correct.
So, you know, fire beware. They'll they'll see it. They'll know.
Okay. Moving right along. Report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items. Uh, number one, the county's bond call is scheduled for next week. Um, I'll be working with Hilltop Securities, um, and through Joe Dory, our assistant treasurer, to join them on a call with bond rating companies, uh, as early as, I believe, January 3rd, 4th, or 5th. We're waiting for the timeframe to be solidified. The budget guideline memo has been fully drafted. It's gone through a proofing loop, uh, with staff. Uh, there are a few changes to make, but I hope to have that released, um, tomorrow. Uh, one of the items on there includes a calendar that mimics pretty much what was done for FY uh, 22 buildup. Um, it is almost identical. Uh, at this point, I'll be looking for budgets to be sent back in early February, which is around the same timeframe they would do back last year. But we're sending out guidance a full week in advance of, um, last year's memo to give them a little bit more of a head start. Um. We were noticed by the Department of Capital Asset Management this week, uh, that the next phase of Commonwealth due diligence at Quincy District Court is going to be underway. They have signed a contract with a company called Vertex to do hazardous material survey of the Quincy District Court. Um, I've alerted, uh, Mr. McGowan from Facilities, uh, to be on the lookout for the scheduling of this work because one of the things that includes are borings on the property to find out what is under the subsurface, and they will be going down as far as five feet. So I want to make sure that Mr. McGowan is alerted as where these borings might be in case they encounter any uh, obstructions or issues. Uh, let's see. Uh, confirming, uh, Commissioner Stady recommended that the Commissioners uh, entertain a visit from the Holbrook Regional Emergency Communication, um, group, uh, that is scheduled for January 12th, 2022.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna be looking to schedule an executive session for next Wednesday, January 5th, with Michelle McNulty to discuss strategies as we begin the process of negotiating contracts for the three unions in Norfolk County. So it'll be a, an immersion meeting, if you will, to sort of express and discuss the overall strategy. And then finally, um, I will be, uh, signing up for a Office of Justice CFO Grant Training, which will be held, uh, virtually on January 22nd, 2022. It is a webinar. Uh, this is required when an organization is receipt of federal grants. I've done this several times. I believe you have to do it once every three years or so. Last time I did it was in 2017, so I'm due, and I'll take that virtually from my, from my office. That is all I have, sir.
Okay, any questions to the county director here? This will be the last questions of 2021.
I.
Wonderful.
This is, I just threw you very quickly, uh, can we get an update when it's convenient? Uh, a concise update from legal counsel on the status of some of our cases as well? You know, we haven't heard from him in a while. Just kind of, the Walpole matter and, uh, a few other cases he's working on. I, we could be great to get a little, you know, report from him or whatever's appropriate.
So update from Attorney Lopez in the month of January. I agree. I think it's.
Might be a good idea.
I think it's timely.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take care of that. Um.
I just have a couple of comments because it's a year-end meeting. I don't have anything else agenda-driven, but I think it's important to mention a couple of areas that we're mind mine thankful for, proud of, and attaboys. One is in the matter of personnel this year, we made enormous, uh, strides and changes. We made changes in the engineering department. We made many changes at the agricultural school. We recently added, uh, some new acting custodians in the, in the maintenance division, and we have ongoing, uh, hiring issues and programs at the Registry of Deeds. Um, um, this board has been committed to in spite of our Abraham's report, which is my second subject, and in spite of COVID, which is my third subject, uh, able to maintain this the good service for our citizens in Norfolk County and the working public that comes to all our buildings, um, particularly the Registry of Deeds. Um, we're, we're a quarter of the way through the Abraham report. More, more, more to be heard. We need and want input from everyone. We're getting it. We could, we could use a little more, but now when we meet with department heads again for their budget, you can be sure that it will come up again. Third thing is, I'm, I'm unhappy, or there's nothing we can do about it. I know you're unhappy too, but COVID is rearing its head again. We're back to uh, having John McGowan's folks, uh, spray different offices because we're having some people, employees, uh, with some issues in testing positive. So we're right on top of it. We're looking to get some more uh, equipment and testing kits to get out to people. We worked on it today. We're working on it every day. That's been very very much of a challenge, but we're all learning to live with it, and I think it's a a kudo to, uh, the leadership of, uh, our department heads and the work of our employees, all who should be congratulated. Uh, the last thing that I'm very proud of is the advent in the implementation of the ARPA funding, and we actually got money out into the hands of cities and towns. Of course, we're, we're, we're patting ourselves on the back to be the first of the, of the four counties. But I think this only good can come about our, our coming together with all the other counties. And, uh, it, it, it is something we didn't know a whole lot about nine months ago, and now we're, we're, we're we're, we're putting the pedal to the metal and, and getting this money out to the towns, and that's where it should go. Hopefully, down the road, we can get some for some of our issues, but not ahead of the towns. And we do have issues on buildings between the schools and the courts. We could use money too, but we'll, we'll, we'll get to that after we get to the cities and towns. And we're always gonna eye out for better ways of doing it. So I mean, I can say, I wish everyone a happy new year. I hope everyone is safe. Uh. Again, it looks like we're in for a little run for our money with the COVID, but I don't have to tell anyone that. But everyone's doing a great job and, uh, uh, I hope everyone has a healthy and happy new year. And again, uh, congratulations to all the department head and employees for the job they do. Commissioners, any comments, questions before we adjourn?
Well-stated, Mr. Chairman. I look back, it's amazing to think that we're coming up on a year when you and I were both sworn in, and of course, that was a, a momentous day in many ways, nationwide and locally. But, uh, I think the board has accomplished a great deal, and a lot of it's been a collective team effort. It's been an honor and a pleasure, a privilege to serve with you both, and I'm looking forward to all the challenges ahead in the new year. So thank you, sir, and happy new year to everybody.
Okay. Well, we're gonna ask for a motion to adjourn, and again, everyone should have a happy and healthy new year. We're gonna adjourn at, uh, 1:40. Don't get used to it. We'll be back to a full calendar next week in January. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. I'm gonna adjourn this meeting in memory of Francis W. O'Brien, a past chairman.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Happy new year, everybody.
You too.